I think the people that I get to work with day in, day out. The culture from the top down. We're a God-fearing, God-honoring company. He has blessed us and to work in a place like that day in, day out is truly, I think, an exception in our country. I wish we had more places like that.
Welcome here to the city official meeting. Thank you for standing. We're going to start our meeting today by welcoming and thanking Mr. Gene Shelver, gentleman in industry church Christ.
That's great, yeah. It's budget time, Lord, and you know how much budgets bug us. The budget problem is always the same for the poorest family trying to stretch their pennies to payday, or for the corporate giant trying to transform investment capital into dividends, or struggling churches with inadequate titans, or beleaguered cities with shrunken tax bases. You know, Lord, that the budget problem never changes. We never seem to have enough dollars to finance all our dreams. Thank you, Lord, for our commissioners who have labored so hard to address the tough choices in the budget before us today. Thank you for leaders who are willing to spend the time it takes to learn the facts, who are willing to make the unpopular decisions forced upon them by those facts. Bless our deliberations in this place today, Lord, that your wisdom and your grace may mark our words and our deeds this day. Through your son we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dan. Would you draw me for just a moment please?
I pray to the heavens to the light of the United States of America, the nation of republic where wishes stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mayor Hope Harcom had a long-term commitment out of the area, and so he's gone for this week. And so, commissioners, we felt like we were able to rise to the occasion and get along with that and go with what we best can. So, we're going to begin with the agenda today. Thanks for being here. It's our typical meeting at 3:00 on Tuesday. I'll remind you that the first meeting of every year of the month is a late meeting. We start at 5:30. So, first item on the agenda is the minutes. It's a copy here and it's been posted. Do you have any comments from the audience on the minutes, from the commission? Any other motions?
Dr. Mary Prodean, I would move for approval of two sets of papers presented as superior to the ninth and superior to the third from the eleventh.
Second, the motions.
An emotion has been seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposition? That passes to the minutes is a board to revoke. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 7297. This is the first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of lot 19, peripute town side in section 123, block 2, AB&amp;M survey, Potter County, in the vicinity of South East Sixth Avenue and Vernon Street, residential district 3, residential district 3 with a specific use permit, 163, replacement of the tightly manufactured home. This is recommended for approval by 7-0 vote of the planning and zoning commission. This is an area that's outlined on your monitors overhead. I would ask of Mr. Shaw or Ms. Jackson to give us some help.
Mr. Mayor, the item before you has been presented by this family. They've applied for the specific use permit necessary to locate the residential manufactured house in the area. It has been through your planning and zoning commissions required by the ordinance. That group has recommended to you by 7-0 vote that this home be allowed to be placed in that location.
Pretty good. You can see it on the diagram above. Are there any interested parties or anybody from the public who would wish to comment on this proposed zoning change? Anyone on the commission? Any man have a motion?
I move for approval of ordinance number 7297.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That ordinance passes by a 3-0 vote. The next item on the agenda, number three. This is ordinance number 7298. This is the first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of a 13.0 oriented tract on pleasant land in section 37, block 9, BS&amp;F survey, Randle County, in the vicinity of Colton Street and Hollywood Road, Loop 335, from agricultural district to multifamily district. This is recommended for approval by 7-0 vote of the planning and zoning commission. Any comments, please, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a portion of what is to be known as the Redstone subdivision. It's immediately south of the South Loop or Hollywood Road, located just on the west side of Colton. The requested zoning is an area that's currently zoned agricultural, and they are asking to transfer that to multifamily one as part of their overall development plan in that section. There is not currently development on that area. This is a new development. You can see it on your screen in front. Are there any comments from the parties here in the audience who would like to speak to this ordinance?
From the commission? Any man have a motion?
Ms. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7298.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor that are listening, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
In the vote, that passes by a 3-0 vote. The next item is item number four on your agenda, ordinance number 7295. This is the second and final reading of an ordinance adopting the city mayoral budget for the 2011-2012 fiscal year. This budget left the city to continue providing effective public services, programs, and assistance for mayoral residents in the upcoming year. This is the second and final reading. It was discussed last week. We had extensive budget conversations about this, and this has been available to any member of the public who wished to voice concerns on the ordinance. So, do we have any comments on this ordinance number 7295? If you would, when you come down, state your name and address.
Robert Goodrich, 6510 Sandy Drive, Amarillo, Texas. A proud resident of Amarillo, Texas. Mayor, Mayor Portano, I guess, may I suggest that voting on this ordinance might be a little bit out of order, that it would be far better to vote on 7295 after you have voted on 7296, since 7296 establishes the tax base for implementing the budget proposed in 7295.
Thank you. Well, that's a fine suggestion, but state law would suggest that we are to first adopt a budget, and then we set a tax rate to fund the budget. So, the budget is the one that has to come first. But thank you for the suggestion. Any other comments from the audience?
I'm Jeremy Presley, Hannigan, Delaware, 15, 14, South Bears. With the common way it is and everything, I wish y'all would use not a different ideal, use revenue from other sources that would be coming in in the future that you suggested. I think that would be a better deal for us taxpayers and everyone in town. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other comments?
I have another question. Trina Fournier, 4427 South Hayden. I think this week I had a bunch of questions, so I'm just going to read them off and then I'll answer. I'm looking at the budget. The housing assistance is taking, and last year as well, took a severe cut. In '09, it was $680,513, and then this year it's only going to be $15,411. Last year was like $11,000 something. I'm just wondering why they, that's a really big budget cut, and who are the people who are most affected? Who gave this assistance and who's being affected the most by it? The general funds, two items were listed as other governmental revenues, one for $3,933,219, and another one for $824,771. What is that other governmental revenue, where does that come from? And also, last week I asked about the miscellaneous revenue. You said you needed some specific thing. It was in a bunch of different places, but this one under the general fund was for $930,991.
What was that for you?
Which one?
$930,000.
$930,000, yeah. The other one I noticed was like the Safe and Sober program. Revenue from that that we expect is $120,300. The expenditures on that were $172,358. That is a loss of $52,000 over the course of the year. Doesn't seem to really make good sense to me to lose that much money every year. Last week when I asked about the photographic enforcement, you said that the deficit on that $20,000 was made out by a fund for that. I'm just wondering where the money for that comes from? How does it replenish itself? Water and sewer transfer expenditures in '09, it was $16,500. In '10, '11, it was $33,420,630. And this year, it's budgeted $11,297,000. That's like a big up and down, and I'm just wondering why that is and what are the reasons for that? The transit maintenance budget has been reducing over the last few years. In '09, it was $512,352. Next year, it's $45,633. I'm just wondering why that's the main estate cut? Is there something going on with that? It was item number 33715. It's an extra charge. I can't remember which category it was in. It was for $25,406, and I'm just wondering what the extra charge thing is. I'm trying to think about here. Is it my time?
Yeah, that's kind of...
Okay.
That was good. I don't think I've ever heard it. That is quite that quickly. That was good. We appreciate those questions. So, I can answer some, but Ms. Jackson, do you want to start?
Mayor, I'd be glad to, or we'll follow up, whichever you prefer.
Well, you know, I would like to make, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the photographic enforcement. I mean, what happens when those tickets are issued? Those go to our contractors, who then, there are funds that are divided from revenues that are produced to first offset the cost of the equipment. And then, the revenues that exceed the cost of the equipment and are agreed contract rental value for that equipment, then goes back partially to the city, partially to the state. And that revenue in excess over expenses is then used for further traffic education programs in the city. Anybody else want to take one? As far as the line item issues go, such as, we do know that the housing assistance cut are funds that are usually federal and are pass-throughs. Some goes directly from the federal government to us, some travel up in different types of grants like this, travel first to the state, then to us. Those have been seeing cuts on in general on the federal level and the state level. Have I left anything out on that?
No, that's a good description, there.
And so, also basically, as they are cut to us, they are cut, as they roll out the additional programs. I wasn't sure what she was referring to in terms of other governmental revenues, and she quoted $3,800. Do you know that off the top of your head, sir?
I don't, Mayor, but if I could get with her, I'd be glad to figure out what accounts you were looking at, and we'll be able to answer that directly. Same thing with the miscellaneous revenue. The number will help, but if I know the budget that that's in, the department that that's in, we'll be glad to show that to you and what it is.
Do the rest of it? Sure, if you can. I'm impressed.
Okay. The transit payments, that's a very good question. There's two good answers to it. The one, as you may notice, we have an entirely new bus fleet, so the actual amount of maintenance that's necessary on those new buses has gone down and gone down dramatically. Also, as part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, the PARA grants that came out a couple of years ago from the federal government, much of the expense from those categories, and was part of the expense for those new buses, was picked up through those ARA funds. So, you don't have to spend it. What we are spending is coming through some of those grant programs. On the water and sewer transfers, what you're seeing are the transfers into the capital account or the construction accounts, and you see that variance based on what big projects might have started or programs can start in a particular year. The number you quoted, I think it was about 33, would have been the year if you add the amount of local capital that we generate from operating the system. Plus, in that year, that's probably the year that we started the combined high-service pump station at the Osage Water Treatment Plant, which was...
I think it's the Offal Creek Glen Water Rice Purchase.
Was the 33 in this year?
No.
I think it was a 30 this year. Yeah, and for the current year, that would be correct, would be the purchase of the 32,000 acres in Lockwood Tree. But in the year that you're referring to, I think that's the local capital combined with that high-service pump station project, and that's a project where we got 0% money to build a pump station that's capable for one location of pushing the entire system volume through it. Photographic traffic enforcement, the mayor talked about that. The only funds that come in that, I mean, in front, those lines of D that are collected from that, the only funds that go out are those from that same pot of money. Some years, you know, you take in more than you budget to do, you spend less, and that's that carryover that covers the gap you pointed out last week. Safe and sober grant, I would have to look at that. It's either a carryover or a required match for that account. I do think with those long grants, we have to share the required accounting as well. Housing assistance is kind of like the stuff you probably saw on the paper today with Lippers. There are a lot of those funds that are being cut. They're likely to continue to be cut, and who's affected are those people that are the direct recipients of that program. You will also see in some of those other grants in those same sets of codes, a lot of the money that we have historically been able to pass through to some of the social service agencies here in town to do work, kind of on our behalf. Those are going down as well. Miscellaneous revenue, other governmental revenue, if you want to get with myself or with Mr. Frigo. There you go. If you'll show us where in there that is, we'll be glad to get you that answer and show it to you.
Are we hearing comments from the public on item number four, ordinance number 7295? Can I say something, Mayor? Yes, sir. Please.
Gene Shelver, 3516 Carleton, I just want to thank you guys for going through this process, and in doing so, for standing in the tradition of the folks who've sat in those chairs before you. I've been coming to your praise for you guys for forty-some odd years now, and every commission that I've been aware of has been extraordinarily careful to make sure that we don't burden our taxpayers unnecessarily. And in fact, if you've held the increase this year down so, is a reason for us to be thanking you. I think we're not going to complain. I appreciate the fact that I live in Amarillo where the taxes are lower than any city our size in the state of Texas. I'm pleased with that.
Any comments? Any comments? I'm looking for comments from the commission. I would like to say that, first of all, Ms. Fournier, I really appreciate the questions you've asked, and I appreciate the comments, Mr. Hannans and Mr. Goodrich as well. We on this commission don't see eye to eye on everything. This is a stack of documents that's foot-high as we review this question, and I'm always fascinated when a question is asked that our budget folks, head of finance and assistant head of finance, can tell you where those numbers come from. And it's really a credit to you, Mr. Atkinson, and your staff, that you can do that kind of conversation on the blind. I have nothing but respect for that. I have had some consternation in this budgetary process. I actually agree with all the priorities that my fellow commissioners do. We just really disagree on how you might fund that. So, while we disagree on some things, in principle, I think we all disagree. So, I want to thank the rest of the commissioners here for their diligence during budgetary processes and the year-end progress. So, thank you very much. Any other comments? So, man have a motion?
Sure. I move for approval of ordinance number 7295. 7295 adopted in the budget.
My second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. So, that passes by a 3-1 vote. Next item, ordinance number 7296. This is the second and final reading of an ordinance approving the city of Amarillo tax rule setting an ad lorm property tax rate and levying tax on all properties subject to taxation within the city for the 2011 tax year. This ordinance establishes an ad lorm tax rate of 0.29230 for $100 property valuation for city maintenance and operations expenses, and 0.02779 for $100 value property valuation for existing debt expenses, resulting in a total ad lorm rate of 0.32009 for $100 property valuation. So, there it is. Oh, I can read that right there. Okay. This is required by the state of Texas. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Tax rate will effectively be raised by 3.51% and will raise taxes for maintenance operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $9.51. Do we have any comments on ordinance number 7296 from the audience?
My name is Phil Lopez, and I'm the side of 3804 North East 24th. And I think the timing is bad right now on raising any taxes. I don't know why it wouldn't place to the voters, the people that are going to be affected by this tax raise. I know that you're trying to get a 4% increase for the city employees. Who wouldn't want a 4%? It's been a long time since we had it. This doesn't cover this one? Okay. But regardless, I think the bottom line is the tax rate, we're at a bad place right now economically. We got the fire, we got the liquor bill going up, we got everything going up, and to throw a tax rate, I don't even know why we don't ever vote on stuff like this. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Trina Fournier, 4427 South Hayden. I agree that the timing is kind of bad right now. It doesn't seem like a lot, $10 a year on an average, on a $100,000 home, doesn't seem like a lot of money. What I do know from purchasing my, our own home, what, eleven years ago now, when we bought that house, we paid like $50,000 for it. According to the tax appraisal, it's worth like $74,000 now. What I know is that my husband's money he makes hasn't kept up with the price that our home is. If we were to try to buy our house now, we couldn't do it. That's kind of sad. It's really sad. And it's not that my husband doesn't work hard, and he hasn't, he isn't making more money now than he was, and he's making a lot more money now, but we could not afford to buy our house that we are living in right now, if we had to buy it right now, because the inflation is terrible. It's a really bad time to try and raise taxes on people when it's going to be, and when there's already all these other costs that are going to occur. And I appreciate the fact that Amarillo has such a low tax rate. I'm glad that we live here and not somewhere elsewhere, you know? It would really be difficult to afford that, any kind of increase, or just to make what they already had. I just wish that you would think about it and maybe just put this off a while, because I just think it's a really bad time right now, considering the state of the economy and the nation that we own, and the other things that are happening that are going to increase homeowners' costs and businesses' costs. It's just a bad time to raise taxes on people right now.
Thank you, Ms. Fournier. Other comments from the audience? Mr. Goodrich?
Robert Goodrich, 6510 Sandy Drive, Amarillo. Ladies and gentlemen, I propose that you table taking action on this motion until such time as you're able to present to the citizens of this city a set of options for financing what you propose to use money for in operating the city government. You have said that you have specific objectives that you're seeking through this tax increase. I respect that you are in a position to make judgments about what's needed. Sometimes the citizens are going to bring to your attention things that are needed. But I submit to give us a single choice about how we finance those operations in this city is not becoming, and I don't believe it's respectful of citizens. We're capable of taking into account a range of choices about how to finance our city. You haven't offered us, and you've given us a single choice option. You're saying, "Let's increase the ad lorm taxes." Well, I submit, last time I asked for information, you all told me that it was all on the internet. Just go get busy, get on the internet, and you'll find the answer to your own questions. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been on the internet, and I know that there are options and alternatives for financing city government. And I submit that it would, I have great respect for Mr. Atkinson. I have great respect for Gene Frigo. Both gentlemen are well-trained. They have excellent capacity for developing and doing research on financing our city. And I submit that we have resources on board on this body to develop a range of options for how we finance our city. And if we need a tax increase, and I'm not disputing that we do, if we do need one, how are we going to pay for it? Give us some alternatives rather than give us a single choice option and say, "Here, pay it," and you don't give us any chance to dialogue about it. Well, I submit, it would be wrong becoming to say, "We need to increase our taxes by 15,000 or 15 million, and here are three ways to do it." Which do you prefer? I would like that approach a lot better than telling me, "I got to pay the one way you decided that I need to pay." Thank you very much. And I trust you will suspend taking action on this, on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Any other comments from the audience? Chance?
I'm Jim Presley, Hannigan, Delaware, 15, 14, South Bears. I, plus other people, in Potter County especially, live on Peachland. It is hard for me to manage studying around 7:33 in the morning. I have magnets on my house, I have insurance on my house, insurance on my car, motorcycle, et cetera, et cetera. I'm lucky to get a break even. There are some people that make worse, make lower wages than I do on there. You know, like, gosh, there's so many. Y'all hit us so much this year so far, like 12% electricity hike. Well, some of us this year, some of them, that, you know, the cost of gasoline, you know, if y'all had no control on that, but, you know, the gas, gasoline, go rub, you get your four-pot truck, your cars, all that. Every time you go to the store, you know, things are higher, you know? Every different item, a P here, a P there, if not higher. It all adds up, you know? The town is going to get us for six more likely, you know? Six months from now, they said it, on the theory, they said that we will hear the results from having a bad drought, corn pod, everything's going to go up. Hey, let's go. You guys, you know, I was surprised with the items. I didn't know it, you come and make color, you know? But, I mean, you know, all that's going up, and every year on my house taxes, it goes up, in phases where it goes up. And I ain't done nothing outside, outside, I ain't done nothing to it. And later in the year, they done nothing to it. Go active, because it looks good. But my taxes have increased, has went up 128% since 2006. From '99 to 2006, it stayed, it, around there, even one year it even went down. I'd like to have some commissioners and mayor up here that make my yearly tax actually go down for a change. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chance. Any other comments from the audience? From the commission?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a little more comment?
Yes, sir. I think that'd be fine. I think that'd be fine.
I apologize for bringing this matter to your attention on a somewhat belated basis. When we first started talking about budget and tax, tax resources for covering our budget, that was some weeks, months ago, and I'm just a retired, somewhat ignorant taxpayer. I don't understand how everything works, and I don't understand procedures for doing things, and I certainly don't know where all the resources are for getting information by answering questions about taxes and city budget. So I limp into an understanding, if you allow that. I limp into it. All of a sudden, and I've been brimming about this for weeks, what options and alternatives do we have, if any? And all of a sudden dawned on me that we haven't been offered any alternatives. And I regret for springing out at the last minute on you, the idea that you suspend taking action on a formal budget matter, but there hasn't been any time for having articulate discussion about the necessity for having choices prior to this time because I haven't grown in my understanding to the point where I can say something about it. I have been sitting out there in the audience listening, and I know that the tax resources are critical, the operation of our city is essential for all of us, we all benefit from that. But there's a time, there's a lag between the time to introduce an idea that requires a citizen response and the time that citizens can respond because I think most people are probably like me. We're not stupid, but we are ignorant. Silic can't cure ignorance, can? And you can give us a little time to study the matter, and we'll come up with some choices and alternatives, but it takes time. So please don't feel that I've suspended coming to you with this cause of discomfort. That's not my idea at all. I haven't been able to say these words before today, well, past few days. And I've tried them on a few other people, just asking if they thought, and they said, gosh, Robert, that's a good idea, see if the commissioner's a little biased. So here I am, opposing. And I trust you will act on it. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to stand for questions.
Comments from the commission?
Hi, Mr. Goodrich, this is not necessarily a debate on this issue, but just as a matter of space and fact, back a couple of months ago, we spent three long, long days studying budget. The process begins there, and it's open to the public, and it's well-publicized, but I can't use it. Then we go through the process of, you say, alternatives, we don't offer alternatives as to how you pay your taxes, but we look at, okay, if we do nothing, if we accept this budget, this is what it will mean. If we want ten more police officers, this is what it will be. If we want twelve more police officers, here's what it will be. If we want a place of importantness, in my opinion, necessary catch-up on our status of our streets and their repair in order to try to avoid replacement of, here's what we need to do, here's what we can do. So what I'm saying is, there was a lot of discussion, an opportunity for improvement. And I just, I'm sorry that you didn't make yourself available for, that we go through that.
But I'm ignorant. Mr. Sims, I'm ignorant. I don't know what questions to ask, and I can study all that. I've been sensible to a lot of it, but I just didn't know what to say or do about it. It took me a while.
You're as smart as I am, Mr. Goodrich. I've been around you long enough, so I won't buy that excuse. And if you would have gone through the process, I think you would maybe gradually have did better. But also, we're up against a time deadline. You were saying about suspending a way of table.
Right.
We, we, I think it's starting to budget here. And in order to operate within that budget year, we have to add a new budget, which we did on previous items, and then we have to have the taxes necessary to furnish or to pay the expenses of that budget. That's the process we're going through, and we're up against that time restraint.
But I have to assume that when you hold a public hearing, it's for the purpose of receiving input from the public that you will allow on, and I trust that if it's viable, that you would suspend action.
Mr. Goodrich, we're going to have to, the public outside of the room has an option, needs to have the right to be aware of the proceedings too, and so, comments need to be made in the podium so the public can hear.
Let me come back.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Sir, this is the commission's time now.
Okay, well, I guess we're just here just to decide whether you're going to pass it or whether you're not, whether we're going to have an option or not. The average citizen in Amarillo does not have the education, is not an accountant to figure out all this. There ought to be an option, there ought to be a way you can vote on it. Appreciate it.
Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Yeah.
Commissioner Grayson.
I would like to correct the same that I think Mr. Lopez made, that the raises provided for in this budget are four percent for city employees. It's not, they're two, the raises are two percent for city employees. And also, I just want to say that I think that we all can agree, Mayor, he said that he can agree, and I think we all can agree that any city should take care of the basic needs of its citizens, the safety and infrastructure, and in this case, we're talking about police and roads, and that's what this tax increase is going to provide for, twelve more police officers this year and overlaying of roads, catching up on our roads. And, you know, I understand as well as anybody does. I'm a homeowner with four children, two point five of them are in college, and so, they're very expensive. And I, and I get squeezed by all the taxes. And I understand that the city of Amarillo is not the only entity right now raising taxes, I get that. But at the same time, I try to take care of my hometown like I take care of my home. And if somebody told me, for instance, that I could, I could put a new post in my fence and save my fence for the price of a post, that would be an overender to me, I would do that. And I feel like that now when it comes to the overlaying of the streets. If we overlay now, we can save seven to ten percent later on on replacing all of those streets. And so, I'm willing to pay a penny more in taxes as a homeowner to ensure that it doesn't cost me more later. And I certainly want twelve police officers this year, twelve additional police officers this year, and the ability to do that year after year. And so, I'm, you know, supporting this small tax increase.
Other comments?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to also talk to the issue of everything else is going up, but we can't control what other people do. But we also, at the city, have increased costs for the things that we do, and we have to be able to pay for those. So for the notion that we're the only ones raising taxes for the purposes of nonessential things is nonsense. So I think that we have to look at, the city is a business, obviously a governmental entity, but it also has costs that have to be absorbed and they have to be paid, whether it's a gas pit or a plant or another piece of pipe, the prices aren't going down for us either. So we need to be able to pay for that and also to provide the safety and the services that the city is able to provide for citizens.
Good. And I would just have one other comment, and that is Mr. Goodrich's voice to the fact that we should consider other alternatives. The options the city has to raise revenue are to increase economic development, which we're doing hard and fast in, to cut services, which we actually did to a degree last year during the economic downturn, and to raise taxes. So we're constantly looking at the three legs of the stool, we're working on them all the time, and we've spent countless hours in undertaking this process. And I want to thank the public for coming. And we're open to any recommendations at any time regarding services that the city of Amarillo provides that they think are wasteful and inefficient. I think that would be interesting to hear the city's comments. We've seen that before, and when they have been vetted, we have found those not to be justified ninety-five percent of the time. But we welcome that coming from the city, we look forward to that. So let's proceed through all the comments from the commission. Okay, we have, I'm ready for a motion.
Mayor, I move the property tax rate being increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point two-nine-two-three-zero for maintenance and operations and zero point zero-two-seven-seven-nine for existing debt expenses for a total tax rate of zero point three-two-zero-zero-nine per one hundred valuation, which is effectively a three point five-one percent increase in the tax rate.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. That ordinance passes by a three-one vote. Thank you, dear patients. The next item is item number six, which is a cousin of the last two ordinance. Ratification, city of Amarillo tax rate and budget. Pursuant to the terms of Texas Local Government Code, section one-two-dash-zero-zero-seven-C, the city commission required to take a separate ratification vote on the tax rate when the adopted budget required more property tax revenue than did previous year's budget. Basically, we're supposed to ratify what we just did to make sure we're all going.
Along with taxes.
Along with taxes. So any comments from the audience on this one? Mr. Goodrich.
Thank you, Commissioner. Robert Goodrich, sixty-five-ten Sandy Drive, Amarillo, Texas. I will continue my appeal to you to not take issue, not take formal action on this issue in order to suspend the implementation of what you have proposed to be a tax increase and a budget. I know you can wave all the flags you want and say, this is required of you by law. Well, I don't dispute that. All I'm saying is, you owe me, and maybe other citizens too, a more formal presentation on choices about how we finance city government. You just got through telling me there are three ways to do it. I submit there's at least ten. And if you would like to have documentation about that, I'll be happy to share some of that with you right after this meeting. There are resources that you can draw upon to find ways to finance city government. It is not exclusively within your purview to limit your range of attention to expenses that are presently incurring or increasing our tax rate. I submit, I submit there are more ways to do it. I'm not the smartest guy in the world. I don't know all the things, but I know there are some ways. And I would submit that with a little bit of research, you'd have a whole lot more range of choice to offer us as tax-paying citizens, so that we would be a lot more comfortable with whatever decision is about our tax paying. Thank you very much. I trust you'll continue to give due consideration to this, and just because you passed the last ordinance, doesn't mean you have to automatically pass this next one. That might cause a healthy suspension of the operation that you're going through so that there'll be a chance to do a little more study and help us citizens feel a lot more satisfied with the choices you've got. Any questions? I appreciate your service. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Goodrich.
I'm Jimmy, I live in Amarillo, thirteen, fourteen South here. To get it in more precise for you, it's like, just last year, my taxes raised up about eighty dollars. It don't seem like much, but my Harley has been set for four months because I can't come up with a hundred dollars. Like I said, my money pays, I got here next month. I can't go over here and get money. I can't go over here and get money. I have to deal with that. Here's four questions I have for y'all. I'm going to read them all real quick, y'all have time to answer them. One of the dues that are paid by several different departments, human resources, twenty-five-hundred, box office, two-hundred-and-twenty-five, Senator, Promotions, two-thousand, accounts, five-thousand, police, seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-two. May I have one-thousand-seven-hundred-seventh, four-hundred-and-twenty-six, thirty-three? Question to the library, what is consulting, and why is it being cut? Homeless prevention, why is it actually deficit and tail? School crossing guard, school crossing guard program, why is it this funding being cut? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. I'll jump in.
I've got a few of them. Like, I couldn't run, couldn't do that quickly, but I've got a few of them. Mr. Hammond, the question regarding the dues, Hammond suggests that probably the majority of the departments, you'll see that. In many cases, it's required in certain professionals to have continuing education each and every year in order to maintain their certification and their licenses. A good example would be those that work in finance or accounting, you know, or certified public accounts. You would see the same thing in the legal department, except I believe they call that CLE instead of CEU, but same notion. Certainly in the fire department and in the police department, there are professional organizations to which they belong that provide very current information to them, best practices, as well as all of those individuals have, in many cases, numerous certifications that they have to maintain, and working through those organizations is usually the most efficient way to do it. In the case of human resources department, we want the best human resources folks that we can get, and want them to be trained, and want them to be current. We're under, of course, federal law, two different versions of state law, two different versions of civil service. We need good folks, we need that, not only to protect our employees, but to protect the public, and that's kind of the best way to get that. So you'll see that account in many different departments. You gave a number on box office, did you say two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to say that is for tickets dot com, Sherman? No?
I believe he probably said two-hundred-and-twenty-five. I think he just went through dues. Can you come up here? That would be true.
Sherman, if you would come to the podium, this is Sherman Vass, East Civic Center man. You got the number one, Jimmy.
Good. Good afternoon, Commissioner, and Mr. Atkinson. Yes, we pay professional dues for our box office manager and our three senior managers for the Civic Center. Okay.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars?
I A A M.
Thousand.
I A B M for the managers and intakes for the box office, and yes, a correction would be two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, not two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Okay.
Mr. Hammond, homeless prevention, it exactly is the name states, it's a combination of efforts to help reduce homelessness, to provide transitional housing through certain programs, to provide initial housing, depending on which part of that you're looking at, there's programs specifically for those that might have substantial challenges. We don't often directly provide that service for the conduit to get the funding to those agencies that are most appropriate to do so. Why is it being cut? That's a federally funded program, just as we've heard from several others today. That entire world is kind of taking a nose out right now. If you were to take the entirety of those grants and those pass-through programs that we get, if anyone wants budget review with us, it's that second book that we have, you would see a pretty phenomenal reduction across the board. As money comes from the state, it's up to fifty-five percent in some cases. As it relates to your different housing programs, it's an average of sixteen percent cut, some more, some less, but it's about that average. I would say the only two programs that you'll find in that entire book that have not had to be across the board cuts are those for the women, infants, and children program, and a lot of public health grants, not all of them, but a lot of public health grants have gone up. Some of that is because we've had some public health challenges in the community, in growth in the population served. Mayor, I apologize, I could get your respirer down as we went.
Was something about crossing guards?
Yeah.
School crossing guards. The city of Amarillo funds the school crossing guard program, so, and the question would be?
Why are those being cut?
I don't know that that's being cut.
I wrote something like, I mean, that wouldn't be. On the budget, it says zero in the expenditures column.
For the school crossing guard program? We'll need to look at that. That program is not being cut or eliminated. It's either been moved to a different expense account, or we may have a line item, or, well, we will double-check it. That program is not going away.
I might have to get up there and pay my taxes.
We'll get to the answer to that, Mr. Hammond. For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. Mr. Grayson.
Hey, guys. My name is John Earsen, forty-seven oh six, West Thirty-Six. You know, sitting back there, I'm thinking, you know, I ran for city commissioner in the spring, and I'm not sure what I was thinking, because I could be right in the middle of this. But you know what? I'm thankful that we have people like you guys that love our city. None of us want to pay taxes. I mean, I don't think, whether you're rich, whether you're poor, I mean, the emotion of it, I think, is sometimes gets the better of us. I just would like to say, you know, I'm thankful when my wife needed an ambulance, that I paid taxes. I'm thankful that when our city was on fire this spring, that we pay taxes. You know, your gas costs went up just like mine did. I would remind everybody here that what we pay in city taxes for the average home is less per month than we pay for our cell phones. That includes fire, police, streets. I mean, I think we need to remember, like I said, if we can take our emotions away from this, what we're actually talking about. We're talking about a dollar fifty a month for the average home. Like I said, when your house is on fire, or you need the police, or you need an ambulance, I think it's a small price to pay. I appreciate that you guys, I genuinely believe that you try to make this amount as small as possible to get the job done. And I think it would just be wise for us to just remember that you guys pay these taxes too. It affects your finances as well as ours.
Thanks, thank you, John.
Ms. Earsan? Other comments from the audience? Ms. Fournier?
Ms. Fournier, 4427, Harpenee. On this, it says that it's part of the Texas Local Government Code that you have to ratify this separately, if it's going to raise more tax revenue. I'm just wondering if you have any idea about the rationalization of that, why they have that extra thing? I really know a lot, does anybody know why they, what was the...
I would venture, yes, Mayor, if you would like, because it's, and take it for nothing more than it is. Last week, you very correctly identified the difference between when we're telling everyone this was sixteen dollars and forty-five cents worth of taxes, but the attendance says nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Both are true, but they're apples and oranges. Seems like every time there has been an issue with a public body passing a tax, whether it's an increase, decrease, or what they call the effective tax, every time someone's had an issue, a particular legislature has to fix that one issue, and when they do, it kind of gets out of sync maybe with some of those other things. What we have to do to set these tax rates is in more than one part of the state codes. And they often fix this one, not the one over here, kind of off the track a little bit. So, next time they go fix it, if they don't grab the other one, it's not, it's probably been this way, Marcus, for the last five to six years, but maybe right prior to that, it wasn't quite this exciting to where you asked an elected body to make a vote on something serious as taxes, and then have them come right back and say, "Really? You're going to do it again?" So, wish we could explain it better, but we have to do it the right way.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments from the people of Amarillo? From the Commissioners, anything else? No more?
I just wanted to remind people that I don't want you to go away thinking that we're just doing this here today. This is the seventh meeting. Three of them were eight hours long, each public meeting, then there were two public hearings offered at different times of the day, so hopefully more and more people could come, and then two regularly scheduled commission meetings where we talked about this. And also remind people that if you're 65 or older, your taxes are frozen, so this increase doesn't affect you at all. And I so appreciate what Ms. Rakersen and Mr. Fournier said about depreciating paying taxes. It really is the covenant we have with each other as a community. It's how we can have all the stuff that we have, if we agree to pool our money. And so, paying taxes is really a good thing.
Very good. Any other comments?
My name is 763804, 24th. But I realize that you don't have taxes after you turn 65 or older, but it does cover your kids, does cover your family, your other people. See, I don't even realize that. And this gentleman was talking about that crosswalk, and you have the money that's going to somewhere else. It's kind of, I would like to see more of that, that money went somewhere else, and they're funding it in different ways. Can we fund different things in different ways? Because I know there are places that have some money available, and that's all I'm trying to have is options. And I appreciate your time. I can appreciate your work.
Mr. Lopez, sometimes what happens in the process of doing the budget each year, you take one funding per cent, and I don't hold me to this one because I don't know of that specific example, but crosswalk guards changes categories, and it's another place in the budget. And so, they zero it out in one category, and the same mirror image of the same expenditure is in another area. So, that doesn't necessarily mean that that expenditure went away. Very good. Very good. So, hearing no more comments from Commissioners or the audience, may I have a vote? I'll provide some latitude here, Mr. Hammond. What we want real quick? Yes, sir.
Like Mrs. Green said, you know, people 65, they're exempt from tax, but you know, I've got nieces, I got three nieces, it's all back to them, both my brothers and sisters who are, they're under 65, my mother. But it's all back to them, and that, that that got passed, y'all didn't do that, that was passed by the public, they were put up in the vote, in the voting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. May I, if I have a motion?
Mr. Hammond, I think that would be right on the city of Amarillo's tax rate and budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, can you hit by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? Aye. That motion has this black 31 vote. So, we are now down to item number seven, the resolution, public hearing. This resolution does the public hearing on and orders the removal of substantial structures and solid waste accumulation located in the city. Mr. Rakersen?
Thank you, Mayor. The first property listed on your resolution today was 8409 Interstate 84 East. Mayor, substantial progress has been made on that property, and staff have recommended that it be pulled from this resolution. Second property, condemnation for 1620 South Van Buren Street. This is one wood frame, period beam apartment structure, but that's best as shingle siding and wood frame accessory structure. There we go.
Mayor, this is a property that's been before the Commissioners before. It came up for condemnation by the City Commission in September of 2009, at which time an anti-day extension was granted to allow Hunter County to sell the property as sheriff's sale. I believe they did do so. The structure has not substantially changed since that period of time. There is a new owner, although there is not significant evidence apparent of rehabilitation. The big danger to this apartment is it does have some pretty severe structural issues and some open stairways to it. Subfloor inside of it is dangerous, electrical plumbing system has issues. At different times, it has been occupied by vagrants and other nuisances. At this time, staff would recommend that we do have demolition on that property. There are no current delinquent taxes owed, of course, the delinquent taxes for prior years would have been taken out on the sheriff's sale. We have been upon the property four times since February of 2010, the Moat and the Queen. The property owner has paid those.
Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this property? I can have your name and address, sir.
Yes, I am, 640 F Street.
Magg, and I want one?
Yes, I am, 50.
Number one. Very good. Thank you, Sherman.
Yeah, we bought this property last year, and we bought a couple of properties from sheriff's sale, and two of them were condemned by the building department. And we were working on the one on 303 North Forest Street for about seven months, and that has passed inspection. And we were already down to the building safety department for extensions till we finished the other one, and they gave us the extension. That's why it took us this long to start working on this property. And we've already submitted, let's call for it, to the building safety department, and we're really gonna go ahead, I mean, re-like, to start working on it. It's got a lot of damage to it, and we'd like to redo all the electrical plumbing and mechanical with a licensed contractor, and we'd like to do the rest of the work ourselves. And we're looking for permission to start working on it this way.
Two questions I have. Is building safety already familiar with these extensions that have been developed? Can you please give us a hand with that?
There currently hasn't been any extensions granted on the property. There was a request by the property owner for, they were deferring as they were attempting to finish up another property, and that was earlier this spring. I don't recall the dates when that would have been offhand. However, in the last correspondence, we've not heard anything up until today.
And Mr. McDonald, the scope of work, records was submitted today?
Today, yes.
And yet, when did notices go out regarding the action we're considering today?
Initial efforts on the property began prior to the sheriff's sale, so it began in July of 2008.
And at the time of the sheriff's sale, was the buyer made aware of the action that had already been taken on that property?
Yes, I mean, it was, the county was informed and asked us actually to hold off on demolition of the property. So, we held off on demolition till the property was sold, and at that time, they were notified of the status of the property, as well as, we had sent out notification, I believe, in January or February, excuse me, March?
March 15 of 2011 is the current set of notices that we're working against.
So, you've known since March that...
Yeah, we were working on another property that was condemned by the city, and we could have worked on both properties at the same time. And we did talk to one of the guys down to work on the city building department, and they said we could take some time till we finished the other property. And it took us like six months, I think, we finished it about a month and a half ago. We go, we stay, I have to do some of that, they asked if we needed fencing, so it took us definitely out, and also to work on what the building needs, and to get an estimate of the electrical plumbing and mechanical that took us a while. And we also want to come on the properties we have to work on, that's why it took us this long to finish.
But there's been no communication with the city people?
We've talked to them one time to give us some time till we finish the other property. And the extension passed up about a month and a half ago, so...
But there's been no extension, ask for or granted?
Well, we have, we did not fly part of it. A building permit on this particular property, so we did not need an extension on it. Well, we needed, it was, you know, just the time to finish the other one.
Well, can you see how these images are worrisome, because it, you know, there are holes in the floor, and there are open doorways and open stairways, and, I mean, a child could easily get hurt here.
Yeah, well, when this property was originally built, it was built for long-term lease, but later on, they all entered into eight units, and that, that a lot of stress on the foundation and frames, and that's why it looks so, you know, unsafe. But compared to the one we have, it's in, it's in a lot of better condition.
Well, and also another aspect of this, think about what the neighbors that have to live around this property.
Yeah, understandable, but we had no choice. We have to finish the other property.
Sometimes we don't need it. We have responsibility to your neighbors, as we do to you, and we also have a responsibility to the city of Amarillo regarding the safety or the lack of, you know, it's building, it's just a fluke of notification. We even had a hearing here like three weeks ago, August 30th, to get us to this day today, so it's anybody.
May I ask a question? Just, in this process, if there's any delay in making a final decision to level the structure today, does the whole process have to start over, or can there be guarantee of performance within a certain number of days, or the process just continues on as it was before?
It becomes difficult to do it in that fashion. I think we might have a couple of options before us. One, should the Commission choose, you could take this one item from the resolution and table it for one week. If you were to do so, we might suggest then that you pass the owner or directly with Building Safety to provide the scope of work, which I think was terminated today, so it's a matter then of looking at that, determining, you know, is that hitting the points that need to be hit, are the resources in the way to perform that? And then, next week, we could take this matter back up and either pull it and eliminate it, or you would take action. The second option would be to go ahead today, leave this on, order the condemnation of the structure. The owner would still have the opportunity, moving quickly, to work with Building Safety, to do the scope of work, to prove up the permits, and to get started to make this a good work, you know, from the neighborhood over there. Should they do that, we would come back to you and ask that the condemnation order be lifted. If you choose option two, you've preserved your notification process and the efforts that you've gone through today. And I think the owner has a pretty clear, you know, guideline then of, okay, we're going to do this, if not, we're not coming back for condemnation. The condemnation order is there. Mr. Almaya sent us a letter in March 28 of 2011, building that he was working on, the property on Forest, was unable to do two projects at a time, and asked at that time for two months, at which point he would start renovating this property. So, that would have been at the end of May 2011, for that two months. But I think the time that was early on was requested has been provided, and we would just put that out and back before y'all know, and leave you with those two options.
There's another thing, yes, sir. Very good. Any other comments, sir?
No, this.
Thank you for coming, Dan. Appreciate it. Other comments on this particular property, Magg?
Thank you, 763804. This is not only a property, but it's, I just wanted to know, how long do you have when the houses, they have to pay taxes on it for six years, they don't have utilities, they don't have none, and it turns into a drug house before you put them up to the public to buy?
This would be an issue really that's out of order at this point. But certainly, we could talk to you about that at the end of this meeting, sir.
Okay, well, I had that problem. It took six and a half years to get those people out there, they're calling and hops every day.
We'll be glad to talk to you about that at the end of the meeting, sir. Any other comments on the Van Buren property?
I'm Carla Robbs. I own 1617 and 1619 South Van Buren. I also have with me today a letter from David Forsley, who lives at 1710 South Harrison, and he owns property on Van Buren as well, and I have a couple copies of this for you guys. Thank you so much. I would ask that y'all go ahead and vote to demolish this property. It's been in the present condition for about four or five years now, prior to this owner taking possession of it. It's obviously a cosmetic eyesore. Even though it's boarded up, people are still getting in the property on a regular basis. My tenants are constantly calling me, telling me that there are vagrants in the property, making a mess, causing problems. I can't even begin to tell you how many stray cats live in that property that are constantly over on my property, and we're having to trap them and get in, or come out and pick them out. them out. We've put a lot of time and money into our properties across the street from this property, and it's negatively affecting us. Almost every person who I go to show an apartment to wants to know what's up with the house across the street. And it keeps me from renting my apartments out to good tenants because of the presence of that property. It brings down my property value, it affects my tenants because they feel like their safety's in danger with the people, you know, that may wander into that property across the street. There's also daycare, two day cares right across the street from this property, like Kitty Corr and directly across the street. So, that's not a good situation either. Finally, I've been a property owner and investor for 15 years. We looked at buying this property about five years ago, when it was not nearly in the condition that it's in now. And we determined that there was absolutely no viable way to save that property and make it a money-making endeavor at that time. And the condition of it is far deteriorated now from when it was when we looked at it. So, I encourage you guys to go ahead and move to demolishing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbs. Any other comments?
I'm Joe Custer from Valley Doral. Had us interested in buying this property, but Michael never got back to me. I didn't realize he's still trying to save it. If you condemn this property, be like others. He paid, what was it? $1,637.54 in taxes on this place. You wipe that out, and then you're gonna spend about $10,000 plus of money to tear it down, get rid of it. Then it's gonna be a big hole in the city. Because with your zoning, nobody's gonna do anything with it. None. And then somebody like me comes along and buys it for a dollar. And all my tax money that I pay in here, and you miss you to tear it down, is gone. It's just wasted tax money. So, I believe a man can't fix it up, make something out of it. I believe I could. I wanted to use it for charity, make seven apartments there, put homeless people in there, women, and women with young children that were in trouble in there. On a temporary basis, just kind of temporary thing. That's what I wanted to do. But I think it's very viable, if somebody can take it and use it. It won't cost the city money to tear it down and then give useless homes to the city, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Custer, for your comments. Any other comments on the Van Buren property? From the commission? So, may we see the next property, sir?
Yes, sir. Mayor, the next property is at 2003 Southwest 7th Avenue. This is a two-story wood frame brick veneered apartment complex. This property has been in condition similar to what you see on the screen for more than three years. It has suffered extensive vandalism. The exterior doors and windows were removed, they were not broken out, they were taken out of the property. The exterior staircase that takes you to the basement of the property is open. As you can see from earlier pictures, the guardrails on the second story are not there. A lot of the electrical system has been removed, likely to sell for the value of the copper. Has been occupied by vagrants. It's full of solid waste. There is a storage shed behind it that's also in bad shape. This property, Mayor, we would recommend is definitely a nuisance to the community, and certainly to the neighborhood to which it belongs. This property does owe current taxes in the amount of $1,257. There are delinquent taxes on the property of approximately $6,800. And a small amount is owed to the city for some of the cleanup that we've drafted along that property. And the address of this property is, this property is 2003 Southwest 7th Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any comments from the audience on this property?
That property is right across the street from the Kane Retirement Community. It's initially a high school. It's been a high school for the last three years. I can't believe that, that's what happened to that now.
Name my address. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I may have to name an address.
Code Y 377, South O, Number B.
Thanks, Ms. Quine. Any other comments from members of the audience, people down below? Any comments from the commission? Seeing none, uh, what is your opinion?
Mayor, I would move for approval of this resolution of removing first property, 8409 9th Avenue. But then taking action on the other two properties.
I second the motion.
Here, we have a motion that has been moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by setting on.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes by a four zero vote. And any additional questions can be directed toward Building Safety as we proceed toward the condemnation. Very good. Next items is item number eight. The consent agenda. The following issues and expenditures are included within the consent agenda. A, award housing rehabilitation contract. B, acceptance Texas State Library and Archives Commission fiscal year 2010-2011 grants. C, approval of the annual pipe clamp contract. D, dedication acceptance waterline easement and sanitary sewer movement. Are there any options on the consent agenda that anybody in the borough would like to extract or for separate consideration? Lot of commission. Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by setting on.
Aye.
Any vote? That motion passes by a four zero vote. At this point, that concludes our ready schedule, meaning the air models to the commission. We do, though.
Mayor, I could, you have one special presentation for you today that I neglected to mention during your work session. Chief Ross, Lieutenant Williams.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, commissioners, James Williams, Emerald Fire Department employee and resident of Emerald Professional Firefighters, Local 542. I come before you today for a blessing from the commission to let us sell and wear pink t-shirts one time a year. We've got a new design for them this year. And last year, we gave two checks, each one for $9,500, to the Susan Coleman Foundation and to the Harrington Cancer Center. With your blessing, we would like to do the same thing again this year, sell the t-shirts through the month of October, and allow our firefighters to wear them one day per shift, the days would be October 24th, 25th, and 26th. And with that, again, I would ask for your blessing to let us do this and to help bring awareness for women's breast cancer.
Why don't we, why don't we wear them one day, James? That's a great little condition.
I have enough trouble trying to get that, to wear pink one day.
Well, you know, they say that real men wear pink, and you guys in the fire department are men.
Thank you.
Well, there's a woman. Model it, I'm for it, I mean.
Okay, I got it.
I noticed they didn't get the chief in one yet, right?
And along the same lines that you all are standing up there, I would like to again commend you for the fine job you did on the train yard fire, the hazmat team, you all.
I think there's a feeling of acclaim and general agreement for your pink shirts. We appreciate what you do for breast cancer awareness, and I know my vision's appreciated. God bless you.
Are they first customers of the city commissioners?
That was my next question. We'll be right here at the end of the meeting where the commission's have the first shirts.
And how much are they?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, my apologies for interrupting.
As I said before, that concludes our meeting. This is now a point that we normally keep open to the public who are appearing at this point.
Scare grounds, we're at 2637 West Southwest 10th.
Name, please.
Scare grounds.
What is your name, ma'am?
B.J.
B.J.
And I have a special invitation to all the city commissioners for the Hot Place Food Bake benefit going on September 30th. They're spectacular for their fundraising.
Their casket. I'm sorry.
Your invitation, your ticket for the spectacular on the back on your VIP tickets to celebrate.
Thank you very much.
You all did a great job.
Thank you so much. Thanks a lot, guys. Yes, Mayor, if you'd like to speak, you can come down to the front door. Give us your name and address if you would. Thank you for coming to see us, sir.
Thank you. My name is Beate Hare, and I just lived over in a neighborhood called the U. And it's drive 16 South 2nd Street. But it's, it's a street light in the U area. I can see at my door, it's nothing but dark out there. So, I don't know who to talk to, but it's one street light, and it's right there on 7th and, I think Madison. But it's too dark in that area, there is. Even behind me, it's no street light. I think it's two street lights in that whole area, because you know, right next door to that cement plant.
Yes, Mayor.
Off the boulder?
Yeah. You know, the cement plant, you know, that's right over here where the trucks go off and can pull it out all the time.
On the front of that?
Yes. But it's no, it's no street lights, it's no lights. And you know, for, for the look at you, knowing nothing but dark, that's not safe. So, I just wanna go picture off me some lights down there, come check on it down there, please.
Mayor, we'd be glad to hear that. We'll look at it, they work with SPS. Could we have a report back on that, sir? Maybe in a week. If you could, we'll look at that, we'll get your back from the city manager on that in one week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming. You don't tell us, we don't know, so we appreciate it. Mr. White?
I've got two issues real quick. One is on the city baseball park. Can, for an economic boost to the city, can we, can we get the development company to let our local construction companies have the first bid on that job?
This is actually a project that is being supervised and currently considered by our local government corporation. And one aspect of that project is that the nature of the project, it requires at least part of it, some specialization in those kind of facilities. It's not the kind of project that uniformly a local contractor has ever done before.
Right.
But certainly, I think that the local government corporation and our master developer is open to considering, anytime they can, and in fact, they said it's right, using local contractors.
Well, just use our local contractors as the general contractor on the job, and let them get that general subcontractor that especially comes to help.
That will be under the purview of the local government corporation, who meets and has public meetings. And in fact, there will be a meeting tomorrow at 11:30, is that right?
Correct.
It's gonna be right on the home here, room 306. And certainly, that is something that they would agree about and have their input.
Okay. Another issue, I don't know if y'all have any control of this issue, but the entrance ramp onto I-27 off 26th Street, right there at the interchange. You drop that lane to where the I-40 turns, and you gotta get across that lane to go to where it's right. I drive trucks there. And there's been several times that I've almost hit cars there trying to get, trying to get in the lane of trucks. And then I drive, I live right there in that area also, and I've almost gotten hit by trucks trying to get into the second lane over there. Is there anything that can be done about that?
Well, there are circumstances where, since that is under the purview of the Texas Department of Transportation, they are open to having conversations with us about these things. And as these issues come up, we can bring those to their attention. Is that been discussed before, Mr. James?
Yes, Mayor, that has, Teckstock conducted a study three, two, three years ago, where they looked at several of those on and off ramps. That one, probably the worst. There's a couple of the southbound ramps, 27th ramp.
Both the ramp, on both sides are dangerous. I mean, because you're coming out that hill, and those trucks get off that outside lane to go out.
Yeah, they get in and they can't move over. That is something that Teckstock's aware of and has looked at. I don't know what their current plan is. I know when they did their initial study, what it would take to make the recommended improvements, just if it wasn't financially feasible. We'd be glad to get with them, we'd be glad to get with you and help you get in contact with them as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Quine. Any other comments about issues not on today's agenda? Mr. Goodrich?
Robert Goodrich, 5510 Sandy Drive. May I please invite this commission not to be faint of heart and be supportive of the fireman's petition to raise funds for breast cancer? My wife is a founder and executive director of the Emerald Area Breast Health Coalition, and she's interested in any effort made to address this problem in our society. However, there's one thing that another city is doing that makes us pale by comparison in our efforts to promote awareness of breast cancer. The city of Houston is building a brand new firehouse, and it's gonna be totally pink. Do not fail to note this example.
I think you could put central, trim on central pink for a while. Mr. Custer?
Yes, sir. I'm Joe Custer from Valley Doral. Another comment on that. I have a pastor, and he has Jesus' personal telephone number, and he gets a lot of cures. And his wife catalogs the cures and what caused the disease in the first place. And with breast cancer, his wife determined that if a woman gets cancer in the left breast, she has an unforgiveness towards a female family member. If she gets cancer in the right breast, she has an unforgiveness towards a female non-family member. So, if you can take that and go, but you didn't stop the cancer to start.
Interesting observation, Mr. Custer. Thank you for coming, the city commission. Any other comments? Folks, we're welcoming to comments. Got a quick one, Mr. Goodrich, this. Might as well leave while we're here today, come on in.
Robert Goodrich, 6510 Sandy Drive. Wanted to finally comment for today. I'm really sad that you failed to hearken to a reasonable suggestion made by private citizens, asking that you take action on a matter in a somewhat different and circuitous form than what you're proposing to do. I submit, you have a tough job, I recognize that. A lot of people expressed some very fine emotions, our resident pastor, who I have loved dearly, and another gentleman in the audience who spoke with such clarity about the importance of the things that are in our city that are wonderful. And I would, I would submit, please don't let emotion obscure rationality when it's time to get rational and not just be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Any other comments? Then we will consider this meeting closed. Thank you very much. Bye.